Good afternoon, everyone.
It's like the first day at school. It's been awhile, right?
So, welcome back to reality. We're here to officially call the meeting to order, and I believe the time is still 1 o'clock. Okay, on that note, again, this is the CPS Energy Board of Trustees Special Meeting to be held on September the 9th, 2024, at 1 o'clock, located at the CPS Energy Grid Rooms. If we can go ahead and, again, move to item number 2, which is a Safety Message Invocation and Pledge of Allegiance, and instead of Elena Ball, we're going to have board support provide that. Safety Message Invocation and Pledge of Allegiance.
Testing. We want to review the evacuation procedures so that we are prepared to be safe in the event of an emergency. If you hear the fire alarms, follow the instructions announced through the PA system. If asked to evacuate, use the back doors exiting the grid rooms to the outside. If that door is blocked, use the back door. Verbally alert others in the room and evacuate, then move to the main parking lot in front of the building or the AT&amp;T parking lot over the McCullough Brooklyn Bridges. In the event of a situation like this, our security team will be monitoring the situation and will notify the appropriate emergency services and team members. We also have employees nearby who are trained to administer first aid if needed. Safety is a top priority at CPS Energy, and while we hope this information is never needed, we want to be sure we are always ready. Will you please stand with me for an invocation? We thank you for the many blessings you have freely given to each of us. We ask for your presence to guide this meeting of the CPS Energy Board of Trustees. Provide them with the knowledge, compassion, and wise counsel needed as they discuss the business matters on the agenda today. Help us all to remember that we are stewards acting on behalf of our customers and provide us with the grace to serve all people well. We ask this in your name. Amen. Now, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number 3, which is public comments. Ms. Natalia Lopez, please proceed with public comments.
Public comment provides an opportunity for members of the public to share thoughts on posted agenda items for this meeting. We will invite pre-registered speakers to speak. They may only address the board on CPS Energy-related business listed on the posted agenda. Speakers should state their first and last name, the organization or group they represent, and the agenda item they will speak about. For this meeting, we have two in-person speakers. Each speaker will have 2 minutes to speak. Thomas, will you please cue the timer? Our first speaker is Henrietta LaGrange, followed by Jason Ponse.
Good afternoon. My name is Henrietta LaGrange, member of the Mulberry Street Girl Gang. Don't forget us. Also, Lulac, Razonida, Mind Shift Ed, and Growing Up Brown. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. I may not like this sitting arrangement, but I guess I'll do with it because I would love to be facing my chairperson, my vice-chairperson, especially Mr. Garza, and my favorite lady right there. She knows that. Ooh, she's the brain. She's the brain of this outfit. Mr. Steen, may I get a smile out of you, please? And I don't see a timer. Ooh, it's going fast. And so, this is a working session or something. I saw where some of the community is invited to be in part of the committees. I might not want to be in the committees, but I would like to be in the interviewing process because that's very important for me. I would like to know if this person really that I feel is qualified for the position they're putting, they're assigning themselves to, maybe something better for them. But also, I would like to meet Charles Lopez, either in safety or risk. I hear that Mr. -- I hear great things about Mr. Lopez. Does anybody -- is Mr. Lopez here? Charles Lopez? I forgive him, I guess. But it is such a blessing being here because, you know, my family is CPS, so if I bleed, it's CPS out of me. But thank you, and what I can say is CPS is in a very important position now, in a place that it has never been here before. And that goes to Mr. Garza because he is so dedicated to his employees. He wants to make sure that you are happy with what you're doing. And I know because I feel it. He doesn't have to tell me. I understand. Remember, I'm very well-educated. I may not look it, but I am. But it's -- oh, well, see, it's not my fault. Don't blame me. But Rudy, Eliana, what can I say about you? It's never been said before. Blessings. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Our last speaker is Jason Ponse. That was our last registered speaker. I will now turn the meeting back to Chair Gonzalez.
Thank you very much. Again, like I said, it's nice to see everyone. It was mixed blessings to take a break because then I get out of rhythm and I just get super busy with my primary job, that of a mother and that of running a company, and so I'm happy to be back, and thank you, everyone. I just want to start with the following. Just real quick, a quick thanks for the entire leadership and staff for preparing today's discussion. Just really want to just recap what Vision 2027 Plan for CPS is centered and why we created it. And number 1, it was created, again, for sustainability, reliability, innovative future for energy management in San Antonio and the surrounding areas that we serve. This vision encompasses several key areas focused, each contributing to the long-term, immediate and long-term energy needs and environmental stewardship of the community. And there's main pillars that we are focused on, and that is about sustainability, environmental stewardship, reliability, resiliency, innovation, and technology integration, customer and community engagement, economic development, and growth. And so today, again, I just want to make sure that we understand that today's discussion is a starting point for our board of members and to provide feedback on the framework of the plan. And we can expect the team to gather feedback in addition from the community and workforce to share with us also. And so we want this discussion to be productive. We want this discussion to be about also celebrating the wins of what we've managed to accomplish year-to-date and what is still necessary to completely execute Vision 2027 Plan. And in today's global, regional, fast-paced, and local, fast-paced environment, it is not too early to think about what is beyond 2027. I will tell you, as a technologist, that the items that we're discussing will continue to not just disrupt, but really transform, as cliché as it sounds, the way we live, work, and play. And CPS is in a pivotal position, and it is one of the biggest assets that our community has, and it will set the tone in meeting the goals of not just today, but for tomorrow. We are on the horizons of a brighter future if we take the time to make strong decisions, be collaborative on the board, and prioritize what needs to take place based on, of course, operational budgets as well as the right strategic investments. So, on that note, thank you again, everyone, the board, as well as leadership for CPS and everyone who's in the audience, including community members. I sincerely appreciate your feedback throughout year-to-date and your engagement. So, on that note, if we can go ahead and move to consent agenda, which is item number 5. So, we have the following items to approve: A, payment to the city of San Antonio for July 2024; B, procurement items, number 1, general services, underground infrastructure installation services. Mr. Richard Medina is here, if there's any questions. Number 2, commodity material goods, transmission steel, monopoles. Again, Mr. Richard Medina is here. Number 3, general services, engineering, construction services for accelerated reclosure deployment. And again, Mr. Richard Medina is here. Yes, sir?
President, would you please go on to items individually, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
I've been asked by one of the trustees versus voting for all items together if I would consider voting for items individually. Is there any further comments by any other board members? Okay, then we're good to go.
Madam Chair, just for the record, I've tried to do this in the past, and you've not allowed me to do it.
Thank you, sir. Item number 1, general services, underground infrastructure installation services.
What about payment to the city, A?
Oh, I'm sorry. A, if we could get a vote for payment to the city of San Antonio for July 2024?
I move that we make payment to the city of San Antonio July 2024?
Roll call?
No, we got a second.
Second? A second. Second by Dr. Romero. Do roll call, Sharon.
Chair Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Trustee Steen? Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Okay, item number, again, B, procurement items. Number 1, general services, underground infrastructure installation services.
Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Move approval by Dr. Romero, second by Chair Gonzalez. Roll call.
Trustee Dr. Mackey?
No.
Trustee Steen? Oh, sorry.
We could have discussion before we vote?
I'll repull your vote.
Yes, please do. Okay, discussion?
Since Dr. Mackey's already revealed he's going to vote no, I'd be interested in why.
I'm sorry, sir. Can you repeat the -- at least I understood, Dr. Trustee, Mr. Steen, that you understand why.
Correct. I didn't hear. I didn't hear.
You could repeat it.
Since Dr. Mackey's already revealed that he's voting no, I'd be interested in knowing why.
That it's up to the discretion of Dr. Mackey.
Of course it is, but I'd be interested.
Sure. Dr. Mackey?
And I'm sorry, we're having issues. We can't hear each other, so just so you know. I can hear myself speaking into the mic, so if I ask a trustee to please repeat themselves, just understand why. Mr. Mackey? Dr. Mackey? No comment.
Dr. Romero, any questions?
First statement?
I just had the same question as to why trustee Mackey was voting no. If there were concerns, it'd be good if they were aired. That's my only comment.
I studied this, reviewed it, and if you want to know for a fact, I'm voting no on all 3. So, I have my reasons why. I reviewed it. I've been looking through this and studying it for the last 6 months, and I vote no. And if you all look at it, you all will see the same thing.
Okay. All righty, just go ahead and do roll call.
There's a motion and a second to approve the first procurement item. Trustee Dr. Mackey?
No.
Trustee Steen?
No.
Vice Chair?
Yes.
Chair?
I'm sorry, it was Vice Chair, it was Dr. Romero, I'm sorry.
Vice Chair votes yes.
And Chair votes yes.
Okay, it is a split vote.
Madam Chair, can I make a suggestion?
Yes, sir.
I mean, these are services that allow us to maintain reliability for our community. I would suggest we pull all these items and we move them to the next board meeting.
But to be clear, the motion to approve the first fails. You could resubmit for reconsideration and the -- for the next 2, if there is motion to withdraw, we could -- or Chair, you can just instruct us to withdraw them from the agenda.
No, actually, again, I was in those meetings, and I do believe that we were updated thoroughly, and a lot of these items are what I call high alert, which means that due to supply issues, this could cause delays in our ability to deliver services. So, what I would recommend is, if Richard is here, if we have the time, presentation just to see if we could, again, ask for another vote and see where we stand.
So, I'm sorry, I want to make sure I understand. So, the motion to approve Agenda Item B 1 failed. Are you asking if there is a motion?
What I'm asking is a reconsideration to get a vote before we pull the items, based on knowing that each trustee participated in several committees, they had the opportunity to ask questions, they had the opportunity to express concerns and meet with Mr. Richard Medina. These items are all flagged, in my opinion, as needs that are needed in order for us to, again, be able to meet the demands that we're currently under, knowing that we have supply chain shortages.
Ma'am, if I may treat your statement as a motion for reconsideration, I would ask if there's a second for the motion for reconsideration?
Yes, a second.
There's a second for a motion for reconsideration, so the matter is up for reconsideration and discussion?
Madam Chair, a question that I'd have for Mr. Garza is, can these items wait till next meeting?
Well, again, they're going to have to be approved at some point in time, so, yes, they can wait. It's 2 weeks away, but, you know, we're at a 2-2 vote, and I'm assuming that's going to be the same for all 3 items. So, I don't want to waste the board's time, you know, trying to move through this in that fashion. If we can wait, we'll wait for the full board to be here next board meeting and try to get these items passed.
Mr. Steen, I will let you know that I think, again, Rudy is being very generous and being supportive of different opinions on the board, but again, I go back to everybody was just -- everyone got to participate in meetings, everyone had plenty of time to ask questions. Not only that, but if there were serious concerns, any trustee can call the chairman. This does not reflect well on our process, and again, it doesn't really reflect well on the needs of these items. But again, again, I think right now what we have is another vote, and if the vote is no, then the vote is no, and then we'll pull all 3 items. Yes, Dr. Romero wishes to make a comment.
Sorry, it's really hard to turn these microphones on and off. I don't really know what's going on, and I feel like the public who's watching really doesn't know what's going on, and I'm not comfortable not knowing what's going on. We don't have to vote for these, but people want to vote no, they can vote no, but this is pretty serious to vote no on these because we did get them in our various committees. I think the public deserves an explanation for why somebody would vote no on this. If it makes sense to wait 2 weeks in the interest of time, I'm okay waiting, but I -- I have to say it again. I think the public deserves an explanation more than just a no when we know that things are going to not go forward that need to go forward. So, if we have to wait 2 weeks, it's not terrible, but I just, I don't get this, and I'm not comfortable with this.
Dr. Romero, I can say that Dr. Mackey and I didn't talk about this in advance at all, but I've had problems in past meetings where things, very large items, have been put on the consent agenda, and it's standard procedure that any member can pull something off the consent agenda, and I've been denied that. I've been denied it multiple times. My principal concerns are, these are huge amounts of money, and I think, given the financial status of CPS Energy, we as trustees need to be watching these closely, and the thing that's concerned me, and I'm not so sure it's as evident in the procurement items today, but how often, in my mind, we're just renewing things, we're exercising options, instead of going back out to the market to see if we can get a better price. And that's what I've wanted to point out in past meetings, is that you'll see a substantial percentage, you'll see an extension rather than going out for proposals. And at the same time, the party they were extending to is getting a substantial percentage increase in what they're being made. Now, those particular items that I've been concerned about, they're in the rearview mirror now because they were approved. But, so, I'm supporting Dr. Mackey today because I think that there needs to be some rethinking of this, and I think that the idea that we've covered it in committee, that's the purpose of having this meeting that compliant with the Open Meetings Act, that people can see what we're doing, that they can hear the deliberations, the people that are bidding on these things can hear it. The problem with constantly talking about committee meetings is that there are only 2 of us. It's not governed by the open meeting, so it's basically a secret meeting. So, another thing that I'm stressing on these consent items is that we be more open about it and transparent, which is a word that we use a lot, but I think we ought to live up to.
We also use the word a lot of processes, and again, I'm not going to belabor this because there's no secret, the lack of support throughout my chairmanship, trustee Steen. Again, there is a process to defer to the Chair to discuss as colleagues, and you were never denied, not because there's not a process, it's just, again, you refuse to participate in the process. And so, again, I've tried providing you adequate time to speak at meetings. I've reached out to you. You get constant corporate communication, and you've made your decision to use the public forum for a personal agenda versus in the best interest of the community. I've done my best to work with each and every one of you, but this is just another example when you've decide, y'all decide, or individually decide, that you're not going to go through the process, but go ahead and make it a public, you know, this is about lack of transparency or we're concerned in committees. Don't. Again, there's ample opportunities through democracy to be able to, again, communicate your concerns, to discuss it with the Chair, to remove it, to add it to the agenda, and y'all decided, well, not all, individually have decided how to interact with not only your colleagues, but your board chair. So, on that note, if we can just go ahead and do a vote, and if it's denied, if we don't have the board's support, then we will add this item to the agenda again.
There's an open motion and a second for reconsideration. That's what we're voting on right now. Trustee Dr. Mackey?
No.
Trustee Steen?
No.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
It's 2-2, motion fails.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and move to item number 6.
And just for clarity, we will consider?
Yes, please. For the record, make sure that this item is brought no later than 2 weeks, again, to, again, another meeting in order for us to vote on it.
Okay, 5.
I believe it's going to be longer than 2 weeks because, when is the next board meeting?
September 30th. So, items, Agenda Item 5, 2, and 3 are pulled, and all of the items on Agenda 5B will be pushed to the next regular board meeting.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. And again, trustees, feel free to reach out or reach out to Rudy, reach out to Richard Medina for additional information that you may need to have confidence to vote on these items. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I did reach out, and I did set a meeting up. I was there. It did not go through. The technology difficulty, it did not go through, and I just told them, forget about it. I've never had that problem before, and I agree with Mr. Steen on renewing better prices, more diverse, and more transparency on that right there in the committee.
Okay, we've already stopped discussion. If I'm mistaken, I don't want to go into details, but there's a difference between renewing and exercising an option. They were not renewed for 4 years or 3 years. It's exercising an option which currently has a clause. I'm not going to get into procurement law because we stopped discussing it. So, we can go ahead and move on to item number 6, which is strategy session. Ms. Elena Ball, I believe, is going to present today with Ms. Harvick as well as Ms. Sorolla. Item number 6. Thank you.
Well, let me begin today's discussion by thanking Elena and really the entire organization. It's a job of, you know, me and my leadership team and the organization to not just be thinking about what our organization looks like over the next 5 years, but to answer the question I get in the community, you know, weekly about, are we ready to support the growth of this community over the next 25 years? You know, our future can look a lot of different ways depending upon, you know, just external, you know, forces that impact, you know, how we go about serving our community. But today is really going to be about getting feedback from the board that will inform what this, you know, strategy looks like, you know, through 2050. We will take that and talk to the community about it, talk to stakeholder groups, and then come back to the board later on, probably January, February timeframe, and ask the board to allow us to move forward with putting this out there for the community's, you know, feedback. So, I appreciate the opportunity to visit with you all today, and I'll turn over to Elena.
Thanks, Rudy, and appreciate everyone's active engagement today. Just for a quick outline of what we're going to do today, in just a moment, I'll go over the objectives. Melissa is going to go through our planned stakeholder engagement. We want to make sure any strategy that we adopt for long-range purposes for the utility is very diverse and inclusive and representative of the community that we serve. We have a team here from PA Consulting that's going to take us through a discussion of industry forces that are impacting our industry and our business. We'll also talk about some of the strategic implications of those forces. I'll give a preview of the Horizon 2050 framework that we've drafted, and I want to reiterate, this is a draft. We've been conducting this work over the last several months. This is the first formal opportunity to get feedback from the board, but this is a work that is being developed with the intent of rounding out this work the first quarter of next year. We will talk about our competitive landscape, and we'll do so in a closed session, and then we'll reconvene for formal feedback from you all on the Horizon 2050 strategic framework, and then we'll discuss next steps. I do want to reiterate, this is work that's been started for, you know, several months. We welcome input, not only at the end but throughout, and please also bring your questions. Most large utilities in the United States and throughout the world have a framework that's multi-decade, and that's really with intent. The decisions that utilities make are generational by nature. When we invest in power generation facilities, when we make decisions to invest in technology, those have long-tailed implications. And so, that's really what today is about, is establishing your framework to help us guide our decisions. So, formally today, we want to discuss the drivers most likely to impact the utility industry. I will tell you, though, things are emerging. If you were to look back 24 months ago, large load, AI, machine learning wasn't probably on very many, if anyone's, radar. So, the intent with this framework is that it will be living and that the risks and changes that do come up in the future will be incorporated and reviewed in light of the objectives that we ultimately decide on. We do want to align on the key industry drivers and critical uncertainties impacting CPS over the next 25 years. We want to talk and really welcome your input on how important long-term strategic planning is to CPS's future success. We also want to share the early progress and the draft framework we have on our vision, mission, goals, and solicit your feedback. And then we'll document the feedback to support refinement of the strategic plan. I'm going to invite Melissa up to talk about our stakeholder process.
Good afternoon. Rudy mentioned this, and Elena too, but stakeholder engagement is going to be important part of this process. About a year ago, we started meeting with PA Consulting to talk about the industry drivers that could impact our industry, and you'll see that reflected in the framework today. After we receive your feedback, we're going to roll this out to the community and to our broad employee base through a number of ways we're going to do that. So, after this feedback, we will have surveys, we will have community sessions, we will have internal workshops. I know there's about 25 engagement sessions for all frontline employees already scheduled. Those will be on the calendar shortly. And then, of course, we utilize our tools, like our website. Everything will be in English and in Spanish. and in Spanish. We will be doing focus groups, we'll be at different community events, and we'll make sure you all have those dates. From there, we'll do that feedback through about the end of the year, so through December, calendar year, through the end of December. We'll package all that feedback together, you'll see that in the form of a report that you'll be able to review before the February board meeting. And then from there, we'll just continue to get feedback and share that with you all. Yes, ma'am?
I'm sorry, I think I need to speak down here. Well, we have, we've had several representations from the community and disabilities. Are we going to have interpreters to make sure for those of their visually impaired their support at some of these meetings?
Absolutely. And so on the 24, I'm sorry, the 25th, we will have a virtual Teletown Hall, but we do have a sign language interpreter at those, at that session. And then when we meet for our next, the bi-yearly board feedback, we will have interpreters as well.
Not just sign language, but visually.
Visually, yes, yes.
Just want to make sure. Thank you so much.
Yes.
At this point, I'm going to turn it over to the PA Consulting team. I'm going to invite Marley Erdeneck up, and I also wanted to let you all know her colleagues, Doug McMahon and Dave Churney, are here with us to help frame out the industry drivers as well as to answer questions that are occurring really outside of CPS Energy's purview. So they're terrific resources that can, they work all over the United States and world, their organization, they're great resources to ask questions about, how do we compare what's happening in other places? And so please draw on their expertise as you are interested to and able to. So, Marley?
Don't mind, I'll move your notes over here, just so, okay, no, that's okay. Just in case you don't lose them. Yeah. Lovely, thank you so much. First and foremost, just thank you, everyone, for inviting us to speak here today. Really appreciate you inviting us into this session. It's really important for us, we've been with you throughout this journey, so it's a nice checkpoint to share the progress with you all. So first, before I dig into the material, I just wanted to first start with a little bit about who we are. Some of you may know, some of you may not. So just, you know, high level, we are a global management consulting firm with about 4,000 people worldwide, working across eight industries and 18 locations across the US, the UK, Ireland, the Nordics, and Netherlands. So we're quite large, although we have a heavy and very focused US presence, so our US team focused primarily in the US. Here in the US Energy Team, we are approximately 100 people, maybe a little more, and we've completed approximately over 275 energy projects to date, and there's just a little bit more detail on the information on the types of projects we do across North America.
Can you get a little bit closer to here?
Not loud enough, that's unusual. Thank you. So although, you know, you can obviously, you know, read our specialties, we specialize across a number of areas, but, you know, really what does make us different, what makes us unique is our US Energy Team operates across three key areas, which really sets us apart in the market. We operate in energy market fundamentals, utility operations, data and technology transformation, and third, we operate in energy asset commercialization space. We've got a core set of team that represents that breadth across, you know, a large number of PhDs, ex-utility executives, industry practitioners, so we really have a nice badge strength of experience and diverse experience across the energy market. And then thirdly, about our firm, diversity is increasingly at the heart of our culture, and how we will be successful both in the growth of our core business, but also in delivering our core values to the world, really making a positive impact in our customers' lives and their communities. So we aim to reflect this value in the teams that we bring CPS Energy both on this assignment, but as we can, you know, as we've done business with you and do in the future, we are always looking toward that as being a priority of ours. And there were just some examples of DEI programs in there, in case you're interested in learning more. So, you know, I think it's really important to start off with the burning platform for change. So why long-term strategic planning? And we'll be talking about this a lot today, but why long-term strategic planning and why now? First, I'll just say, and you've got this right in front of you, is the energy industry will experience unprecedented change over the next 25 years. You hear this often, so what does this really mean? The electric grid fundamentally is undergoing transition in both generation mix and the types of demand that the grid will be called on to serve in the future. There are discussions happening at both the federal level, all the way down to the local level on this subject. The velocity of this transition will need to be balanced with reliability and affordability of electricity and gas, so those terms you'll be hearing a lot throughout our discussion today as well. Surrounding that, the industry trends surrounding this transition will certainly impact CPS Energy's future business environment. So we are keenly looking at the industry trends that will be, you know, in parallel with this transition. And ultimately, this will introduce disruption and uncertainty that we need to think about when we're looking into the future. So all of this makes planning for the future extremely difficult, and more difficult than ever before. Finally, and therefore CPS Energy is looking into developing a long-term plan that helps us discuss these critical issues now, and also proactively plan for them, so that's what all this is about. So the following portion of our presentation will set the scene for Horizon 2050, or the 2050 Strategy. But before we dig in, I think it's important for us to discuss what's changed, what is driving the conversation today in this room? CPS Energy is faced with both external and internal strategic considerations that extend beyond the traditional five-to-10-year planning horizon, so we're looking a lot farther out into the future. And this will reshape CPS Energy's future business environment. So external considerations are things like emerging energy technology, evolution of the generation mix, which is a topic, a priority topic for you all, resource adequacy, and just evolving customer expectations to deliver reliable, affordable, clean, and secure energy. The internal drivers, you're all very well familiar with by now, of course, is launching of the CPS Energy's capital plan this year, transition to net zero by 2050 and those interim goals, the implementation of Vision 2027, and then our evolving future workforce, and those are just to name a few, but just to highlight the importance of those internal drivers. Ultimately, in this context, we are entering a new phase of strategic planning. And to Elena's point earlier, CPS Energy is not the only utility thinking about long-term planning in this way. 432 utilities across the US have set decarbonization goals, and many of them are engaged, most of them, if not all of them, are engaged in some form of proactive planning, and that type of planning ranges. CPS Energy's challenge is to work out how the energy transition will uniquely impact your business, your customers, and your service to the community. So that's the key here. And I'll add, it's a good thing that you guys are going through this process now and proactively, right? It might be painful, it might be difficult when you're first starting to think through this long term, but it's a proactive process, and it's important. And the bottom line here is, there's major precedents in the industry for this. You guys aren't the first, you're not the last. CPS Energy is not doing this in isolation. You have a lot of peers to look to and compare notes with, and there are a lot of utilities to learn from. So the global energy landscape is changing. We know we're shifting from a grid that for 85, 100 years has been focused on cost, reliability, and safety, and the grid is used to balancing those three priorities since Pearl Street in the 1890s, not 19, 1890s. So this is a past, you know, structure that we're very comfortable and familiar with. Now, in kind of those middle arrows looking to the future, we're starting to see pressures placed on the grid, forcing utilities to think a little differently about how they provide products and services to your customers. And looking ahead, we know our energy systems will need to continue to be secure, equitable, and sustainable, which are those items there on the right-hand side. And we need to balance these three items in hand. These are, we're seeing these three elements here at the global level, the national level, and the local level, albeit potentially in different forms. The orange text there in the slide specifically represents CPS Energy customers' priorities, which is resilient and reliable, affordable, and environmentally responsible. So the bottom line here is this trilemma presents a risk of passive trade-offs across equally, equal priorities. How do you make these trade-offs? You don't want to make those trade-offs. How do you balance those in a way that makes sense for your customers and your business? So this process is all about planning for the future shift, noting nuances across these three areas. There are nuances between reliability and resiliency. You need resiliency to have reliability, they go in hand. The differences between low-cost, affordable, cost-effective, and competitive, those are a lot of terms we're consistently discussing, and there are nuances between those four. Those warrant deeper discussion. And then third, there should be healthy debate about what environmental responsibility means for customers, community, employees. And the bottom line here is, bringing these three all together in balance is not going to be an easy task, but no one's worked it out perfectly yet. So some of you on the board, well, all of you on the board, have seen a version of this in some past discussions where we shared with you our macro trends and competitive analysis, but to just provide a baseline here, the first step of our strategic planning process back in October, November of last year was planning, was evaluating and prioritizing these external trends impacting the electric and gas sector over the next 25 years. There was originally an exhaustive list that we certainly leaned into, and whilst all those are relevant, we really had to hone in on the ones most relevant to CPS Energy and San Antonio, as some are more pressing than others. We worked with leadership over a series of workshops to develop a shortlist of those relevant trends, and selected the top nine that were most relevant to CPS Energy's future. Those top nine are highlighted in this bluish-gray color. And for those nine, we did the detailed analysis and competitive assessment that Elena had mentioned, that shed light on how other utilities are responding to and managing these trends and potential disruption. So using this analysis that we'd produced back in November, October, November, we held a workshop with leadership to define the range of potential uncertainties that we expect to result from these trends, and really identify, I like to call them hotspots for disruption. Where can we see disruption coming down the pipeline that we can start talking about now in our planning process? Together, we identified over 80 potential uncertainties, it was a very lively discussion in that day, grouped into six categories. So, you know, when all is said and done, and after we had taken all of the outputs back and analyzed them, we found, you know, the top two greatest uncertainties were by far technology and energy mix, and regulation and policy, excuse me, regulation and governance. So under the first are things like current and emerging energy technologies, generation technologies, ITOT or information technology and operational technology, AI and digitization, as well as cybersecurity. So that was a very broad bucket. And then the second item here was all about future business model, the competitive future environment, and regulation and policy. We'll dig into those a little bit later. So just to provide a little clarity, I guess, and some details for folks to dig into here, we wanted to provide a deep dive into some of these macro trends and how they specifically are impacting, or potentially will impact CPS Energy, and illustrates why we want to talk about this now. The future energy system, we know, will require matching pressures on generation supply and demand. Not matching that efficiently can impact several things, most importantly, affordability and grid reliability. And it'll also open up the grid to competition and call out what utilities aren't doing for their customers, what the utilities aren't delivering to meet current needs. So ultimately, the utility's job is to optimize supply and demand without compromising cost and reliability, not a light challenge. The changes we are seeing in demand through electrification and the changing generation mix are at the core of uncertainty that we're discussing in this space, that we're grappling with now. And I think the bottom line here is, you know, this will place pressure, or may place pressure on CPS Energy's value proposition over time. And just this middle column here is to illustrate, come some of the key value drivers that the utility today is delivering, your community. And so when we talk about how these trends will impact the future business environment, we're also talking about the potential impacts on the value prop to your local community. So we work with many utilities across the US every year, as you'll recall from the earlier slide about our company, but one of the many things that makes CPS Energy special is specifically your deep commitment to your community, and I've observed this firsthand in all the reading I've been doing with you guys and the work we've been doing together. It's really meaningful. You guys are a unique utility, and it's a great space to operate in. You guys are owned by the people you serve, and you're reinvesting in the community in countless ways. And I'd just like to call out that top line here under the tangible benefits, because those represent your recent Community Impact Report, which has just a wealth of activity and value and collaboration with your community, all the way down to the personal level, all the way up to your massive DOE programs, and your billion dollars in local and diverse supplier spend, so a lot of value there to your community. As a publicly-owned utility, you are, of course, always and will continue to adapt to the changing needs of your community in a very unique way. So one aim through our long-term planning is to ensure, is to ensure that you continue to provide this critical role in the community. And I don't mean to gloss over the intangible benefits, but I will move on to the other content. So all of these considerations drive strategic planning and portfolio decisions, to Elena's point earlier. On the left-hand side here, you'll see a recap, a very high-level overview of what I've just walked you through, which are the external industry drivers and navigating this energy trilemma, driving CPS Energy's strategic priorities. So where are you going to focus strategically to navigate and balance that, those trilemma, and deliver reliability and affordability? So these strategic priorities must be considered in the context of the right-hand side here, which are CPS Energy's internal considerations, which is your business model, current and potential changes to that, budget and capabilities in your organization. And then finally, the centerpiece here reflects what's influenced by those two factors. Forces on the left and right will drive decision-making around the capital portfolio and your strategic focus over time. So your strategic planning process will help you prioritize and reprioritize things in response to your strategic priorities on the left and your internal considerations. So all of this establishes our key question for the strategic planning process, which is how can we most effectively leverage our intrinsic structure to better serve our customers and operate the electric grid, achieve net zero by 2050, and do so in a cost-effective and innovative manner? So I think with that, I believe I'm handing it off to you, Elena, to walk through our strategy materials. Oh, I'm sorry, I actually misspoke. Let me just, okay. So for those of you new to the strategic planning process, we just wanted to make sure you have reference to how we tend to break down the strategic planning process. I don't want to say it's a standard process, but there's definitely a very logical order that we go through these items, and this is overall what you would expect to see in a strategic plan, and the steps that we're walking through, and this aligns to what we're following. So today, our focus is in the highlighted portion, which is mission, a vision, mission and values, and strategic goals, and a little piece there around the scenarios that we've been working on with CPS Energy team. So for your reference, I want to make sure you're seeing the big picture here, but we'll be focusing on those bits today. And then finally, another kind of version of explaining this process, and I always get questions about if they're out of order, and they're not out of order. Step one is all about understanding the current state. So we've done an extreme amount of work to date on this, on this subject. What is the current operating environment that you're in? Then looking ahead into the future, which is where we're at now, what is the future ambition of this organization? What does that future look like in the next, sometimes 10, sometimes 25-year timeframe? And then in the middle is how do we get there? And those are the initiatives and the actions that we need to take to get there, which, you know, we haven't touched yet, because we are currently in step two. So with that, I will hand it over to Elena.
Just before we leave this part...
Sure.
On slide 15, is that supposed to indicate that the state of Texas has a clean energy mandate?
Okay. Yes.
It does. There is a renewable portfolio standard in the state of Texas, and I might need to phone a friend. Kathy, it used to be 10%. Is that still right? Renewable energy?
I'm just there, we've far surpassed it.
We have.
The initial percentage was...
That's right.
Okay. It seems a little misleading if it's a 10, I mean, I know you're just saying, does it, or do we don't have it, but yeah.
They primarily focused on that when we were trying to build transmission lines to get the wind out of West Texas, so created an RPS, and then they created the CRES zone, you know, investment, but it hasn't been updated in quite a while. That was, you know, I don't know, 20 years ago, probably, so it's, it's an old policy, but there's a policy.
And it's still an active policy?
Well, again, we blew past that so long ago.
But I think the question is, if it is Texas, it's still an active policy, not CPS Energy.
It is on the books, yes.
Mr. Steen, I really have a question.
Sure. So if you put up slide 12. And, you know, I grasp the importance of developing a five-year or even a 10-year strategic plan. However, given the rapidly evolving nature of the electric utility industry, driven by, among other things, technological advancements and shifting customer behavior, how useful or helpful is it to try to plan out 25 years? Some would say there are simply too many unknowables, so please enlighten me on this. And it sounds like from some comments that Ms. Ball made, that a lot of our peer utilities are doing this. I didn't know this, and so just please enlighten me on it.
Trustee Steen, I'll tell you, the reason that I am, you know, that the chair and I have been...
Trustee Cian, I'll tell you, the reason that I am, you know, that the chair and I have been working together to get this to the board is because we've got a 2050 decarbonization goal as a community. Our Climate Action and Adaptation Plan says we're going to meet certain requirements, you know, 70%, 100% carbon neutrality based on 2016 emissions by 2050. So I think you have to create a long-term strategy that at least allows you a chance to every now and then come back to it to make sure that you're on track. Otherwise, you know, you could get five years down the road and realize you're not on track to meet a 25-year goal. So the driver from my standpoint is the 2050 cap goal. But I will tell you, I just came back from an EPRI CEOs meeting that where long-range planning was a hot topic of discussion. Any utility that, you know, is trying to think about the future is working on a long-range plan now. That could be 10, 15, 20 years, the iteration of how long, how forward you're looking. But I will tell you, there are business leaders in this community that want CPS Energy to be thinking 25 years ahead.
And the only thing that we'd like to add, I think we mentioned the word agile in process. The whole purpose is to update the plan as needed. And this is why strategic planning, whether it's next year, two years from now, that we continue to look at a high-level plan and then, again, come back and sprints and kind of see where we're at. And so whether I'm the chair or not, if we as trustees are not agile in thinking about how to attack strategic planning, then I believe that we're going to do a disservice to this organization. It's not just about, you know, approving procurement. It's really about approving the plan so that we can support the actions that are needed on a short-term basis and, again, on a two-to-three view and a future-forward view. And if we don't do that, I think, again, we do a disservice to the community that's looking to us, not only for disharmony responsibility, but to make sure that when they did approve a rate case, it was that these things would be included in our plan. And so we didn't mention that our plan reflects those commitments to the community as well, in addition to what do we look like in the future? That's all I have to say.
Ms. Erdine, could you answer my question? Just enlighten me, are a lot of utilities doing this 25-year planning? Or is this usual or unusual in terms of what PA Consulting is seeing?
I would say it's not the industry standard. It's definitely not, every utility is certainly not doing that. But I think to Rudy's point, when you have a target out to 2050 that you're conscientiously working toward, that's certainly what some utilities are doing, not all. And just building on Chair Gonzalez's point, this is about getting people comfortable in the practice of strategic planning. It's exercising that strategic planning muscle so that we are, as a team, consistently coming to the table, prepared to have these discussions, having the difficult discussions around how we think the future will unfold. You're not predicting the future. We're going to have a session dedicated to this later also. I don't want to overspeak, but I think it's public, it may not be public session. It might be the executive session where we'll be talking about some of that, what the scenario planning looks like and how do we think about the future in a way that's not committing us to a 25-year plan.
Well, but just to be clear, CPS Energy proposed that to you, or did you propose that to us? In terms of, like, did you say you should have a 25-year plan?
All of this is our team's, you know, view of the future. You know, PA is a resource to help us, you know, put it on paper and get there. But this is absolutely our belief that 2050 horizon is the right horizon to look at based on a community goal that's been set for us.
Thank you. And then just one quick question on slide 15. So everybody's going to have a different view on macro trends. How did you say you came up with the top nine?
Through discussion. Elena, do you want to take that one?
Yes, we had workshops with the executive team, essentially looking at, you know, the macro trends that are occurring in the industry and which ones we think were most applicable and most likely to emerge in our service territory in our market space with our customers.
Did you vote on it?
Yes.
You did, okay. Well, just to say, if I were voting, I would include stranded asset risk and rate pressure.
Okay. Thank you.
If we can go ahead and move on to the strategic plan overview, Elena. Thank you.
So thanks to PA for providing some important foundational information about our industry and the importance of long-term planning. So this slide sort of pulls it all together. On the, your right side here, you'll see some of those industry forces that we highlighted as an executive team that we believe are going to shape the future of CPS Energy. But as the chair mentioned, down at the bottom, uncertainties are going to continue to emerge, and we're going to need to be responsive to them. And then in the center, these are essentially what our customers want. Our customers have been very clear. They want affordable, reliable, clean energy. They also want to have options, flexible energy options. And ultimately, you know, our vision is to deliver all of these in a manner that powers, you know, all of our community through valuable, fairly-priced products and services that meet the evolving energy needs of our community. So the Horizon 2050 framework is on the screen now. This is in draft form. I know you all got the material ahead of time, but I wanted to visit with you all about this draft framework. We are going to discuss competitive forces and that scenario planning that was briefly alluded to here in a moment in a closed session discussion. And then we'll reconvene to seek your input and feedback into this framework. This is certainly, you know, an important meeting where we seek your feedback, but we also want you to know that you can continually provide us feedback as we go through this exercise. So the vision, you know, ultimately, what we are striving to do is to ensure that we have the energy needed for our growing diverse community through 2050. We do have a firm that helps Melissa, Serula, and team, and they have helped us wordsmith. You all know I'm an engineer, so definitely need help with wordsmithing. But to help us take the feedback and the input that has occurred to date and come up with these draft statements. And so for our vision to 2050, we have a proposed, a community empowered for generations. And the intent there is to convey literally the energy supply that we provide to our customers, but also empowering our customers through energy choices that they want, as well as ensuring that we are empowering our community through the returns that we provide to our city owner, to all of our various programs and our philanthropic efforts. Our mission is very similar to our mission today, to power our community with reliable, sustainable energy at a competitive price. Again, these are draft. We're seeking the input of the board. And then we have three goal areas, reliability, sustainability, and competitive pricing. Internally, we set two more internal-facing objectives around financial resilience. We need to ensure the financial health and resilience of the organization in order to provide our customers with the energy that they desire and as well ensure that we have team and business excellence to deliver on the mission that we have sought. So with that, I'll pause. There will be a full session for feedback, but just wanted to introduce the framework to each of you for consideration. And so with that, I believe, Shanna, we can... Yes, ma'am.
May I ask by any trustee before we move to the next portion of the presentation? Mr. Sting?
Just to be clear, one of the purposes of this meeting is to get trustee input and feedback, correct?
It's the core.
Yeah, I noticed it's been agendized that way as a discussion. And, you know, when you listed the session objectives, one of them is solicit board feedback. And of course, Ms. Gonzalez in her opening remarks talked about getting feedback from the board. So I have some things to say, but I should wait till after the executive session.
You certainly can provide, you know, if you have input now, but we are going to have a full agenda item specific in this presentation to obtaining that feedback. And so if you want to give it now, you can. But that's what we're actually going to go into after executive session is the feedback session.
All right, well, I'll do it after executive session.
But yes, we absolutely want the feedback.
All right, well, thank you. We'll go ahead and continue, Shanna.
At this time, this board is going to recess into executive session to discuss matters that have been duly posted under several provisions of Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, including consultation concerning attorney-client matters under Section 551.071, and to deliberate, vote, or take final action on competitive matters under Section 551.086. At the conclusion of executive session, the board will reconvene and open session. Continue the meeting. It's 2:01 PM as we go into executive session. At the conclusion of executive session, the board will reconvene in open session, continue the meeting. It's two oh one P M as we go into executive session.
.
Check one. Check one, two.
Okay, Shannon, if you can bring us back from executive session.
Yes, ma'am. It is 2:53.
It's 2:53 and the board has concluded executive session. I can confirm that there were no votes taken and no matters were discussed, that we're not part of the posted agenda. We have a forum. Okay, if we can go ahead and move to item number eight, which is to continue the discussion, the strategy session conversation. We have the consultant. Please proceed. Please reintroduce yourself again and the name or the organization.
Sure, this is Marley Erdeneck. I'm Marley Cottington with PA Consulting. Thank you, Chair Gonzalez. So, thank you, everyone. As Elena had mentioned and opened earlier, this is the period of time that we've provided to gather your feedback here today. But of course, this is not the end of that opportunity to provide feedback. So, we wanted to provide a forum for everyone together to have a dialogue around this. But your feedback is more than welcome following this session via writing or in-person over time as this continues to evolve. So, to bring us back to the core components of the 2050 strategy that we've walked through earlier or presented earlier, we wanted to take the time to walk through each of these components with you in a little bit more detail and gather your feedback and appreciate that you've received this material in advance and have taken the time to take some detailed notes and document your feedback. So, that's greatly appreciated. So, first, we'll start with the vision and mission. And as Elena had spoken to these a little bit earlier, we've worked together very closely to frame a potential vision statement. And I just want to caveat that this represents the work over many months together, represents a lot of the strategic and visionary conversations we've had about the future. This is what we plan to take to the street with customers and to employees to get their feedback. So, what we want to do is make sure we're incorporating any final feedback you have before we bring that in for that input period. So, for vision, we are proposing a community empowered for generations. And for mission, we're proposing to power a community with reliable, sustainable energy at a competitive price. So, just to kind of kick it off, and we have a couple prompt questions here and happy to hear questions throughout, of course. First and foremost, key focus areas for the next 25 years, does the board feel that these, the vision and mission statement represent the core focus areas for CPS Energy over the next 25 years? And the second question, I'll just lay them out and then we can go back to the first one if that's okay. The second topic of discussion, we wanted to focus on, do these statements meet the emerging community needs and expectations over the next 25 years? And I want to open it, you know, open the floor up to you all who have prepared feedback potentially and start with that opportunity.
Does any trustee have any feedback? We'll start with Dr. Romero.
Okay. I'm trying to be closer to the microphone. Good. I love the vision statement. So, kudos on that. I just really like it. I'm hoping some other utility somewhere doesn't have the same one, but I really like it. The only thing that is just not quite working for me is competitive price. That doesn't, I don't know what the right word is. And that's something to discuss. I just feel like that's not who we are as a utility. We don't talk about, well, at least we have a competitive price. It's about more. I think in our discussions, it's always about more. It's the best price we can do, something like that. So, that's the only thing that seems out of place for me in here.
Well, we've gone round and round about that term. We, you know, we always used to use affordable. We've used valued at times. You know, what, where I think we kind of, how we landed on that term over the years has really been, you know, look, the investments that we're making, we may not always be the lowest, although we're trying really hard to be the lowest in the state. We might not always be the lowest, but we certainly want to be among the lowest, which is how we arrived at that competitively price. So, we'd be open to any other term that we think captures what our customers expect out of us, knowing that we've got investments to make over the next decade that are going to dictate kind of, you know, what, how valued we may or may not be.
The only thing I would add to that is, you know, in our industry, we call it best value price, something to consider. And the only other thing I would say is under sustainability, where is the equitable component of how, you know, we plan, what our mission is, you know? Again, based on statistics, we have to be mindful of being, making some really strategic moves based on needs, based on, and again, when I say equitable, it's not really about affordable prices. It's just, again, which communities deserve, not deserve, but based on data, need these types of investments. And it's equitable only because that environment is ripe for it. Ripe, R-I-P-E, not right. Because not all communities are built the same and are going through different business plans, per se, by priority of council. And it's not all equal in priorities, if that makes sense. And an organization is such a big component of how those investments are made. And so, just something just to keep in mind, even if it's, you know, again, we don't have to spell it out, but I think it's important if it's driven under reliability, sustainability, that that's kept in mind.
Well, there's this video. I'll share it with the trustees. I've shared it with my leadership team. There's this video out there that talks about, you know, kind of frames up equity. And in my mind, when we talk about equity, which we absolutely, you know, have to pay attention to, it's really, are we creating a solution that works for everyone? Right? Because you've got needs, and you mentioned it, you know, talking about the 7207 versus other parts of town, you know, our solutioning has to, has to apply equally to all socioeconomic, you know, customers. So, when I think of equity, it's coming up with solutions that broadly work for everyone.
Any other trustees with comments? Mr. Steen?
So, Ms. Ball and Ms. Erdeneck and Ms. Searola, thanks for your presentation. And Ms. Ball, I especially want to, want you to know how very much we appreciate your presence here today. CPS Energy is so fortunate to have someone of your outstanding abilities and steadfast dedication in one of our top leadership roles. So, if you please put up slide 19.
Am I going in the right direction or is it a previous? Okay, sorry. Oh, thank you. Somebody controlling? Yeah, thank you.
19. Yes, you've changed him. That's it. So, there you see mentioned on the right side, delivering on CAP, net zero by 2050 target. And I'll remind those listening in today that CAP, you know, the C-A-A-P stands for Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. So, as to identifying, managing, and mitigating risk in regard to our generation portfolio in connection with developing a long-range plan, I'd like to focus on the financial risk resulting from generation decisions made by our CEO and approved by a majority of this board a year and a half ago. Allow me to quote briefly from a recent Wall Street Journal piece entitled, "The Climate Crisis Fades Out." So, here I'm quoting, "The 2015 Paris Agreement aspired to reduce the risk and importance of climate change by eliminating greenhouse gas emissions in the latter half of this century. The centerpiece of this strategy was a global transition to low emission systems. But the significant global emission reductions envisioned in Paris are now a fantasy," and I'll just repeat that, "a fantasy. Emissions grew to an all-time high in 2023 with the consumption of coal, oil, and natural gas each near record levels, driven in large part by the energy needs of the developing world. Despite global renewable energy investment of almost $12 trillion in the nine years ending 2023, fossil fuels continue to provide about 80% of the world's energy. The latest United Nations Emissions Report projects that emissions in 2030 will be almost twice as high as a level compatible with the Paris aspiration. Despite generous subsidies, U.S. deployment of low emission technologies can't meet near-term goals, let alone the projected surge in electricity demand owing to data centers, artificial intelligence, electric vehicles, et cetera. Simultaneously, the scientific rationale for the transition is weakening as expectations of future warming are moderating," close quote. And although not part of this Wall Street Journal article, I might add these factoids. Number one, in 2022, China approved the equivalent of two new coal plants a week. And number two, China opens a new, opens a new coal plant every week. CPS Energy's current plan was adopted by the board on a four-to-one vote, four-to-one vote, on January 23, 2023. In the midst of significant financial stress and notwithstanding that stress, both on the company and our customers, but for reasons related to deadlines set forth in the Paris Climate Accords and the City of San Antonio's 2019 Climate Action and Adaptation Plan CAP, this board decided to close/convert our remaining coal-fired plants. With management's concurrence, this board agreed, decreed that the Spruce One Coal Plant be shuttered by the end of 2028 and that the Spruce Two Coal Plant be converted to run on natural gas by 2027. But focusing on the closure of Spruce One, let's recall it was placed in service in 1992 in the expectation that it would operate until at least 2047 and perhaps longer, that is, until 2062. Thus, the board's decision on January 23, 2023, per that decision, it will be shut down at least 20 years early, or if one posits a 70-year lifespan, 74 years early. But I'll go ahead and stick with the more conservative, lower lifespan number. The financial people call this stranding an asset. And our CFO, Corey Kojinski, has explained it this way, quote, "You can write Spruce off, but the debt is not going away. It still needs to be paid. When that stops generating, you still have the asset, but it's not making any money for you, but you've still got the debt," close quote. So, recognizing that our current generation plan has created financial stress and resulting risks upon the company, at our January 17, 2024 board meeting, I asked our CEO and CFO to quantify the full financial impact of the Spruce decisions on CPS Energy. As they were understandably not prepared to do so on the spot, I then asked that my request be considered an action item coming out of that meeting. Please correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe this requested information was ever sent to me or the board. I acknowledge that outside of my requested action items, some financial information has been made available, at least to me. For example, in order to keep Spruce One in operation beyond 2028, I've been informed that CPS Energy will have to complete two projects. First, to meet affluent limitation guidelines, evaporation ponds must be added at a cost of around $60 million. And secondly, I'm told, a selective catalytic reduction system, SCR system, must be put in place at a cost of $150 million. But these expenses must be weighed against the financial impact of shuttering this plant 20 years before the end of its technical, before its technical end of life. So, Mr. Garza, earlier this month, you participated in a North San Antonio Chamber Panel on Energy. And according to the Express News, said the following, quote, this is your quote, "I know one truth about my customers in San Antonio. They care about reliability above all else, and they want it to be as affordable as it possibly can be. And then everything else, all the good stuff, sustainability and decarbonization, and all those things they want too, they come after the first two are met," close quote. So, Mr. Garza, I concur with you that our customers are primarily interested in two things, reliability and affordability. And later, you stated, quote, "I can't ask our ratepayers to invest that kind of money and then not be able to run," close quote. You were talking about future generation assets, but your sentiments ought to apply in a like manner to a plant like Spruce One when you're planning to close it down at least 20 years early. And given ERCOT's response so far to CPS Energy's decision to close the Braunking plants, all three of which have reached their technical end of life, how might we expect ERCOT to react when CPS Energy is proposing to shut down Spruce One so many years before the technical end of its life? How might we expect ERCOT to respond to CPS Energy just walking away from 560 megawatts of capacity? Let me wrap up by reiterating why all of this is of the utmost importance. With regard to both CPS Energy's Vision 2027 Generation Plan and its proposed Horizon 2050 Plan, I'll synopsize my overall concern. As our CEO, Rudy Garza, has often said, basically, there are only two ways to pay for all this additional Vision 2027 and Horizon 2050 spending. That's by taking on more debt or by increasing the base rate on CPS Energy's customers. In both instances, there are dark clouds on the horizon. Let's take CPS Energy's debt, which has ballooned to $7 billion. As we all should know by now, our debt capitalization ratio, our big three leverage metric, where lower is better, continues to exceed the 60% threshold historically set by our three credit rating agencies, and disturbingly has been projected by CFO Kojinski to increase to 67.8% in fiscal year 2029, notwithstanding baked-in every-two-year rate hikes. I'm apprehensive that unless all this discretionary spending can somehow be reined in, we're on our way to becoming excessively leveraged. And what about more base rate increases heaped onto our customers? Last fall, Mr. Kojinski confirmed we're planning every-two-year rate increases, including 5.5% in fiscal year 2027 and another 5.5% in fiscal year 2029. Yet, for literally years, 20%, one-fifth of our residential customers have been in arrears. So, how much more can CPS Energy ask these overburdened customers to shoulder? Fundamentally, what we're contending with here is the financial shock, or more specifically, utility bill shock, to our retail customers from climate-related transition costs. CPS Energy is planning to inflict a lot of hardship on itself and its customers in order to meet climate goals we now know cannot be met. Again, the goals of the Paris Climate Accords are now considered out of reach, a fantasy. So, I'll close with this. In light of what I've outlined briefly above, are we, as a company, for our own sake and for the sake of our customers, willing to revisit and perhaps adjust or tweak our generation plan? Or despite the developments highlighted in the Wall Street Journal article I quoted, are we inflexibly and unalterably locked into what was decided by this board on January 23, 2023? And I'm respectfully asking our And I'm respectfully asking our general counsel to memorialize in the minutes of today's meeting the foundation for the concerns I continue to have about the path CPS Energy is going down. Thank you, and that's all I have at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Steen. Is there any other feedback by any trustee? I do have a couple of questions, Rudy. So what investments took place this past year that were significant, that provided support, and I don't know if this is the right way to state it, what recent investments that we make in this past year that have supported the areas that we heard from the community? Again, can't validate which district, which low-income, high-income community, but just based on the plan that was presented to the community not too long ago, that has empowered us to be able to provide reliability and affordability to our city?
Well, in one fell swoop, we created almost half a billion dollars of positive net present value in purchasing 1,710 megawatts of natural gas capacity that will replace everything that we're planning to retire and then some. And I've said it before, you know, when you're relying on 60-year-old, you know, natural gas plants to provide reliability, you have a false sense of security. And I said that too, by the way, at last week's, you know, State of Energy address. So, you know, the plan we have agreed to that is in compliance with our city owner and their expectations of a utility company that they, that the community ultimately owns, we have bought baseload gas, which is, you know, within the plan at a huge value. We have procured additional, or we're in the process of procuring additional nuclear interests that will, that's zero carbon and baseload. We have signed a multitude of solar contracts for new capacity, two contracts in particular for battery storage, which will be placed in the exact spot where we need it transmission-wise to provide a more resilient transmission system. And we've procured additional wind power per our, you know, per our approved generation plan. All I can do is take the input from the majority of the board and move forward with that. And we've moved our generation plan forward, you know, in every front. You know, so I would say that execution of the plan that this board, that a majority of this board, you know, told us to go and do, we have moved forward in a very, very meaningful way.
I had the privilege of being there at that meeting, the North Chamber Energy Estate, State of Energy. Can you please also, there was a really good slide that really talked about, and I don't think we have it here, but they really talked about Texas in general and where ERCOT is seeing demand and then where CPS is aligned. Can you kind of just recap on that?
Well, from our generation perspective, you know, we have, we've, we're diversifying both in types of generation and in the geographic nature of where our generation is located, which inherently creates a more resilient, you know, generation system for our customers. So that's in one regard. But when you look at the planned capacity across ERCOT, the good majority of it is in solar and batteries. And that's not because those are being incentivized. That's where the market is inherently taking the industry, as I've said, to de-risk some of the elements. I mean, you know, we could have not decided to close Spruce, the Spruce Two units, or repower them. And with us being out of non-attainment in San Antonio, that would still mean we might not be able to run them when we need them. So you keep those plants open, but you're having to buy power on the open market because EPA limits our ability, you know, to emit at certain times of the year when NOx, you know, emissions are an issue for, you know, during those high ozone days. So by keeping, just take coal out of the freaking discussion. It is a risk mitigation issue from a regulatory standpoint on why it makes sense regardless of whether you're for coal or against coal. That has absolutely nothing to do with, you know, where we're going. I have plants on the ground today that next year we may not be able to run if the EPA puts, you know, such strict, we're in severe, we're moving towards severe non-attainment. That has all kinds of implications for the assets we have on the ground today.
And Dr. Ramero is really good at this.
Yeah.
For clarity, a lot of us may not understand what non-attainment means. In layman's terms, what exactly, what is a better way for you to couch that?
That means on high ozone days, from, you know, both the transportation standpoint, point sources like, you know, like, you know, the manufacturing facilities we have in town, or the cement, you know, aggregates, you know, companies that we have in town, certainly our power plants, there are certain times where this community's going to get hit with a limit. And right now, what's happening is the state of Texas and the federal government are deciding whether we're going to have to operate under a state implementation plan or a federal implementation plan. A federal plan, you know, just by, you know, can be expected to be a much stricter plan than our state plan. So that's going to have implications on how our generation fleet runs in the future, which is why, you know, quite frankly, we had a pretty diversified rate advisory committee that took a look at the data that we showed them based on how we're operating today and said, "This generation plan makes the most sense to de-risk, you know, your generation portfolio." So again, you know, this isn't Rudy Garza's plan. This is a RAC plan that ultimately was endorsed by our board, that we've talked to city council about, that we're in the execution stage on. And what we're doing is no different than what the market looks like across ERCOT. You know, we've just been more proactive about it in terms of how we speak to it.
Thank you. Dr. Ramero?
I think it's an important day because it's the first day where we're talking in a public session about our 25-year plan going forward. And I echo what everybody said about Ms. Ball and how much she has brought to us. And when she told me this was going to be part of her job here to plan for the next 25 years, I was really excited about it. Would anybody else want to have that job of directing that effort? This is monumental, and it's really, really important. And trustee Steen, I totally respect your perspective. And I think we need to think about this in terms of, we have a big job ahead of us, we're going to work with the community, we need to finalize all this. We need to find a way as a community to find a plan that works going forward. And I think we as a board are going to have to put some effort into this and have some discussions and maybe have some compromise. And I'm willing to discuss anything about future threats. I'm not going to say the conversation's closed because the Wall Street Journal says that there isn't climate change, but I'm willing to hear a lot of input from people. From what I hear, that's not true at all. But I think we need to have a good group discussion, not just talking at each other. And so I think it seems ironic to suggest that our first step in moving towards 2050 should be to move backwards and revoke the generation plan. And again, I would echo what Rudy said, the generation plan wasn't where we sat around and said, "Oh, no, we're not going to be in compliance with CAP. We better pass this generation plan no matter what harm it does." No, it wasn't like that at all. It was a cost-benefit discussion, and it ended up being that it made sense for a lot of different reasons that Rudy just outlined. So I would just say that I just want us to be able to discuss. I want us to be able to talk to one another. We all have different perspectives, and I don't want us to all just say, "No, I'm the climate change person, and, you know, you're the Wall Street Journal person." I don't want our discussion to be that way. I think we can, I think we can do better for the community with this, and I'm looking forward to that.
Any other feedback? Mr. Steen?
Ms. Gonzalez. Directed, this is directed at Rudy Garza. So, and the great thing, I've been on this board for eight years, and we never really talk about politics, and we shouldn't. But so much of what you say seems to be driven by what the EPA is doing. And so are we planning? If, you know, we're going to have an election in November, we're going to have basically the same administration, or we're going to have a new administration come in? Are we looking at that in terms of how the EPA might evolve?
What I've learned over 20 years of being involved in regulatory matters is the Clean Air Act is the Clean Air Act. Regardless of whether it's Republican or Democratic administration, you know, the EPA cares about clean air. And, you know, could it, could it change, you know, future decisions? Absolutely. I think that once you're designated non-attainment, you know, the politics going one way or the other isn't going to change the fact that you're non-attainment, because the Clean Air Act is the Clean Air Act. So, yeah, we do all kinds of scenario planning based on how regulatory regimes might change, but policy is pretty consistent.
Well, like you, I've had a long involvement with politics. And yes, you've got the Clean Air Act, but you do have a very activist EPA. And I very definitely think that would change if we had a change of administrations.
I wanted to overlay one other perspective. When you look at the cost of technologies and you look at our evolving market, in particular our wholesale market, we saw it this past summer, all of the modeling from, you know, all of the large intelligence groups that we get information on, they're all pointing to the same thing, which is the market is going to continue to see increased adoption of lower-cost technologies. And those lower-cost technologies used to be coal and gas. They now are quick responding gas and renewables plus storage. And so part of why our generation plan is, I think, is working so well is we're diversifying our resources, and we're looking at them not only in how they're being rewarded today, but how we expect them to be rewarded tomorrow. And so as we see higher and higher levels of penetration of solar in particular, we're going to see throughout the year suppression of wholesale market prices. They're going to further push baseload units out of the market, right, out of being able to earn the revenues that they have enjoyed for many, many years. So this is as much an economic discussion as it is a political discussion as well. Just wanted to add that.
I'm sorry, this is hard to push the button on these things. And again, and again, I had the privilege of attending CIRA and to answer both the question that Dr. Steen asked, and you just restated. Again, this is a very large, you know, oil and gas conference that takes place in Houston, at least this one took place in Houston, and it draws about 8,000 delegates. And the reason why I'm saying this, 85, and from 85 different countries and more than 1,400 speakers across the energy supply chain. And some of the takeaways, I think we've talked about it already in different forms, but the one that states that I think, again, back to answering Dr., Mr. Steen's question is on the, that regardless of what president will be there, many of them who attended this conference pretty much said, "We don't see it rolling back. We see it moving forward, steady state, maybe some variations of different policies, but to go backwards, that will not take place regardless of presidents." And this is not coming from our mayor. This is coming, again, from SMP organizations that are fairly large to dominate our industry. So I think, again, the beauty of our plan is that it's community-driven, it is board-driven, and it's agile in nature, and that is to make sure that we take into consideration everything that's taking place as we speak today. And so with that, I would like to conclude the comments by our trustees and move on to the next item on the agenda.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
We're going to go ahead and touch up our goals. Here we go.
Got it. All right, so we'll move to the next portion of this discussion, which is review and feedback of our goals and goal statements. The statements have been provided to you in advance of this session, and they should be in the appendix section under the glossary of terms. So we have five goals that are being put forward as potential candidates for your consideration. And to reemphasize, this represents the work over the past several months and represents the feedback of the senior leadership team and folks within the organization. And we also will be taking these for input from the community and additional employees within CPS Energy. There are five total goals. Three of these goals are external-facing, customer-oriented goals, which on the topic of reliability, and I'll add resiliency as well, sustainability and competitive price. And then we have two internally focused goals on the subjects of financial resiliency and team and business excellence. The focus of our discussion will be primarily on the three external-facing goals, but if you have feedback on the other two, that's also welcome, of course. And I want to give you a moment maybe to find and find those definitions, make sure you're able to review them and you're not missing a page or anything. But we also have two more, two questions for these goals. And I'd like to recommend that we move through these in order since we have the time. So we can start with the reliability and resiliency goal. And our first question is, are these appropriate goals to meet the challenges of the next 25 years? And I'll just put it into consideration, are there any additional goals that you think are missing from this list that you think need to replace or augment this currently proposed list? But we'll start with reliability first regarding the first question.
Dr. Ramero is going to speak?
Well, just to clarify, so I'm looking at Slide 25 where it has the goal and then a little bit of a description of it. Because I, okay, because I'm not seeing it in the appendix, so just, it's on Slide 25, I think.
Thank you.
So that's the create a faster and more efficient system to respond to demand.
Correct.
The only thing I wanted to say about this goal and the other goals, and I'm not saying I have the answers, is to make sure that we're not using terms that can mean different things to different people, because then I think we could get in trouble with it. So, for example, and I know I'm skipping ahead, but with sustainability, cleaner energy. So obviously, for some people, natural gas is cleaner energy, and for some people, it's not at all. So I think having a term like that is something we could have discussions on. For competitive price, offer more affordable energy versus similar cities. We're going to have huge disagreements on what's affordable energy and what are similar cities. So I just think, you know, that's something we need to focus on, just, you know, whether you love it or don't love it, we have to make sure we all agree on the description of these goals.
Thank you. Yes.
I think along those lines, I go back to the equity discussion. Oftentimes, equitable decisions is usually tied to just low-income, district-francised communities, right? But I think, again, part of the plan, and I think, again, why I love the current plan, is that when we think about equitable decisions, again, based on districts eight, nine, 10, that could be more battery storage investment. I'm just going to throw that out. For someone in District 2, 3, 4, 5, it could be community solar. So I kind of go back to definitions. I think it's important not only do we have definitions, but that we also have income data. I think oftentimes we make decisions and not take into consideration income. And so, and again, the reality of different communities with different priorities, right? So I know we can be all-inclusive, but I think we've done a really good job of being very mindful historically, at least for the past couple of years, of taking those items into consideration. So I go back to equitable does not always mean just for those with low income. Equitable means just the right investments, again, by the right RIP environment. And so I think we're doing a really good job about that. I think, again, there's an opportunity, again, for us to use tools, asset tools, or real-time tools. Again, we talk a lot about AI. And making sure that we do a better job of assessing those communities and what infrastructure's in place, and then what equitable investment or what current investments we're making that we can continue to either enhance or fund in a different way, either through grants or through, you know, rate structure or through collaboration. So again, back to definitions and then just making sure that it's tied to what we're doing already, and then how maybe we can expand or pivot or even edit what we're currently doing.
Okay. All right. Oh, go ahead. Reliability, I'm trying to get just this right, distance from the microphone. Create a faster and more efficient system to respond to demand. I'm not sure what faster means. I don't know if that means we'd get people hooked up faster, if they get electricity faster. So...
An example could be a sensor, could be having sensor technology gives you faster response, faster data to be able to say, "Oh, we're going to have a problem over here, therefore we need to be proactive." So, I don't know.
That could be another one, yeah. But I think people are going to take it to mean faster, like we're going to get you hooked up faster with the new data center. And I think we need to be realistic about that. So, again, just thinking about what people could, and, and the community, of course, will give us the input on this, you know, how, how people might be interpreting this differently, because we don't want later for somebody to say, "Well, but that's not what I thought you meant." So, this, this will be great to, to sound into the community.
Thank you. That's a good call out. So, noting cautious of misinterpretation and the need for definitions. Any final feedback on the reliability, resiliency? Okay. Well, we can move on to the sustainability item here. For sustainability, you also have this, and perhaps I should read it for those in the room. For the sustainability goal, the current statement, and this is draft, please note, "Balance environmental, economic, and social dimensions to create a resilient, future-ready utility that delivers reliable energy services while minimizing outages and/or recovery time for outages." Am I looking at the wrong? Oh, thank you. I'm sorry. Multiple definitions.
It's on 25.
That's great. Okay. We had, we had several kind of forms of input on these. Oh, I see. You were looking at the, okay. Yes, thank you. Thanks. That's okay. Yep, there's a more detailed version, and we've also simplified them a bit. So, which do you prefer to use for this purpose of this discussion? Is this one good? Both? Okay. All right. And I'll, I'll just, for the sake of everyone in the room, I can, can read the, the one in the, the short form as well. "Enabling an affordable, diversified, and environmentally responsible energy future that meets our customers where they are." But in the main, these are kind of the, the emphasis points that are included in this statement. And again, this reflects the input of the leadership team and several iterations on these potential goal definitions. And I think important to note across all these, and as we discussed earlier, there are nuances across these terms that require more detailed discussion, whether it's competitive and affordable, whether it's sustainable and environmentally responsible, you know, certainly that's what we're here at the table today to discuss and, and going forward. So, I'll pause. Is there any feedback on the sustainability item?
About sustainability. Now, we're going to talk about pricing, but is it our solutions, regardless whether they're environmental, economic, social, future-ready utility, I mean, is what we charge sustainable? I mean, I think that's something that we have to be mindful, because we can say, "Okay, we're going to implement an AI-driven, you know, sensor system so that we can sustain a certain, you know, environment in a certain district." Well, if it's going to cost us today a dollar, but to sustain that, to prevent outages, it's really over time going to cost us, you know, $30. So, I, I know, we don't really talk about the cost of sustainability, but there is a cost to sustainability. And so, we, we, in generality, we're speaking about sustainability, but, you know, we talk about economics, but again, sustainable pricing, sustainable, when do we walk away from a solution when it's no longer sustainable? Because either A, it's not supported by the market, B, no longer sustainable, because the environment has changed drastically, there's beyond, there's constraints that we, we can't work within. And so, just, just something to consider out when I think about sustainability.
Would you, how does the term operational sustainability sound to you? Because then it could apply in a lot of.
I mean, I don't know if it's about me, but it's just something I'm just saying out loud. I mean, I, I think I will look to y'all to think about it, but it is something to think about. You can't do sustainability without operational. You can't support something without some kind of operational mechanism in place that's, that supports the action of how to create a balanced, you know, ecosystem for future-ready or, or resiliency. So, it's just, you need the operational component in other, in order for you to have that sustainability. So, just something to consider when I read this. It doesn't, and, and here's what's interesting. Yeah, we want it balanced, but the, we kind of go back to the unknowns. Is it, again, operational? What, what did you call it earlier? Really? Operational?
Well, I called it operational sustainability.
Well, operational sustainability.
I think you're speaking to a multifaceted view of sustainability, you know, in, in the way we're running.
Versus same balance, because I think it really is of operational sustainability, because to maintain balance, you have to look at that model.
I actually kind of like the one on slide 25 better, because it talks about diversification. I don't really understand this definition. It seems to veer a lot into reliability, and maybe it doesn't need to. I'm just not seeing a clear line reli, between reliability and sustainability, and I just, it just seems like it's sort of walking around something, but not telling us what it actually is. But I think it has to get to diversification, because that's such an important part of sustainability. But yeah, I think with the last part, we're just, we're getting back to reliability.
Any other feedback on sustainability?
I think we're the only ones right now. We can move on.
Yeah, I have to say, diversification of energy supply is definitely a topic we had in some recent, recent discussions, so I really appreciate that feedback. Okay, so moving on to competitive price, you know the drill. But if you want to read the, the more detailed definition, and I'll read our compet, our customer-oriented affordability and community, connecting customers and community to flexible energy products and services. And competitive price here up on the screen says, "Provide adaptive energy products and services that balance customer value." So, in this case, we were talking a little bit more about value as opposed to competitive price here. Community needs and maintainable growth.
I think we, we touched on it earlier about the term competitive price. I mean, again, I'm just going to speak from the, my personal experience of procurement. And I think also, just in general, the reality is that what's affordable for one community is not affordable for another, but I understand the need to be also very transparent, that it may not always be affordable to have this solution roll out, but over time, it can become affordable, right? So, sometimes you pay for it upfront, and then over time, it becomes affordable, right? So, as far as competitive price, I think, you know, maybe, again, we go back to best value, something that's more encompasses of versus competitive price, I think it's something to consider. Again, we talked about the extremes in, in income in San Antonio, and therefore, again, back to what's competitive for one is not competitive for another, and what's affordable, again, for another one is not for another. So, but we do need to be frank in the sense that things do cost money, and we need to find out how to pay for that and, and be very forthcoming about that investment and why, and why we need to have that rate case. And so, that, I think that's where we can elaborate a little bit more when we go out to, to the community. But I would say, again, reconsider the term competitive, potentially best value for the community, because the only other term that I know is like, low is technically affordable, which means the cheapest, but yet it meets the demand, right? And I don't think that people want to hear that. We're going to make a decision for $1 because people want affordability, but there's also risk with that by saying it meets that criteria. But for a dollar more, now it's a best value decision for a community. It's a decision that we're paying a dollar more, but that that solution can last 10, 10 years versus just maybe a couple of years.
Thank you very much.
I think the word, as she said, the word investment needs to be in that definition.
Any further context? Just curious around using that term in particular, or in what context you'd like that to be referenced?
That, that it just can't, oh, it can't be the rock bottom price, because we need to be investing in the future so that we can maintain that low or competitive price, whatever it is we're going to call it. But we can't do that if we're not investing along the way, and that's going to mean it won't always be the rock bottom price that we.
It can't be the rock bottom, because an example is when Turi, right, by not weather, by not doing the weatherization, we found ourselves having to pay for it upfront. And so, sometimes, even when we don't see what's coming at us, we can't always, and we should not always make a decision just because it's the most affordable decision. Sometimes we have to invest a little bit more as we anticipate, and we already have enough data even before this presentation that San Antonio is growing, Texas is growing. And so, again, are all investments going to be competitive in price and nature? Maybe our process might be like through a procurement process, right? We get three bids for something, or we're looking for the best partner through an RFI or collaborative partnership. But again, to, to tell our community that every decision, you know, is, is going to cost us $1, I don't think that's right. We go back to investments being very transparent, and that some investment may cost more than others. And so, whether it's in the definition, not necessarily the goal, I think we just need to be mindful. It's kind of like your next one, how we, I have been an advocate of financial resiliency versus saying, I, I think before we used to say, what, what was the other? Financial.
Stability.
Stability. Because, again, there's so many dynamics, and we recently just approved a different way of how we measure that metric. And so, that's an example of, is it really price resiliency? You know? Maybe that's something to consider for that one.
Well, I'll be interested, once we start talking to the community, there are multiple ways you can determine best value, and kind of the beauty's in the eye of the beholder. Do you do it on a, on an M per customer basis? Do you do it on our ability to, you know, to, to provide service in a, in a more affordable manner as compared to inflation? You know, that's one way to do it. There are all kinds of ways that, that you can measure that. And, and I, I think it'll be interesting to see what kind of feedback we get on how our, our community, what determines what best value or, or competitive price, or whatever, whatever you want to call it is.
Again, we'll, we'll move on, back to considering price resilience. If you look at the definition, that might be something to consider. Again, the relationship between customer and us, the rewards and the burdens of the market volatility with customers, that's a prime example of why we might want to consider, instead of being competitive price, that it really is about price resiliency, right? Because at the end of the day, the customers are going to feel the burden or the reward of where we are with the market and our investments as well. So, it's something just to consider.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Elena, is there any, I was, we can either move to internal goals, or do you have anything you want to do?
No.
Okay. All righty.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let me get us back to, so just want to thank everyone for their input, both in our process as well as in the, the vision, mission, and draft goals. And just for next steps, we are moving into full community, employee, and stakeholder engagement. We will be refining our strategic framework, the measures and targets. We've got several other steps, and we will be coming back to the board. But I do want to assure you all, if you have further input into this process, or if you think there are categories of, of work or focus areas we need to include, we're very much open to this during the process. So, with that, that concludes our presentation, and I want to thank everyone for the input.
Elena, real quick, what is the timeframe for the board resolution?
Yes, ma'am. We're looking at bringing that in February, March, in that timeframe.
Of 2020?
2025.
Five, right.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Steen?
You know, we, we often in these meetings, we talk about what the community wants as if we really know that. And it's great to have a lot of community meetings, and you get feedback from people, but gosh, how many customers do we have? 900,000 electric customers? Something that's been, that I've been thinking about is, once a month, we all receive a CPS Energy bill. Do most people get their bills mailed, or no?
Almost over 60% of our customers get online bill, or online.
I'm one of the old-fashioned ones, mail. But I think that if we got somebody to advise us on it, it seems like we've got a ready mechanism to finding out really what the, what the community wants, instead of this kind of way we do it now, where we go to meetings, and a lot of times, it's the people that have particular agendas, and there's nothing wrong with that, that feel strongly about certain things that show up at those meetings. But have, have we ever thought of utilizing the fact that we, that we are in constant contact with our customers to, to try to understand what the community wants?
Trustee Steen, what I would say is, the one thing above all else that I learned after winter storm Yuri, is that our, our owner expects us to do the work of going out in the community and, and finding out what the community has to say about the job that we're doing and what their expectations are. So, you know, we've got a whole team of people who are out at community events every day, asking people what they think about the job that we're doing. And we do that in a lot of ways. You know, we'll have open houses here, we'll have, you know, meetings with in particular, you know, stakeholder groups, you know, all over the community. And we'll go and talk to our council members, you know, about this, these topics. So, our goal is always to get the maximum amount of input possible so that, you know, you get diversified perspectives. So, I think we've gotten in a better place quickly with our community because of the amount of effort we, we put into asking for feedback.
No, and I, and I, I respect that, and that's good, that you, that, and you do a lot of that yourself, and that's good to be seen in the community. But I don't want us to fall into a trap. We're, we're based on those types of things that we begin to say we know what the community thinks, when, when there might be a way to really find out what the community thinks. And it gets into these questions about, like you talked about at the meeting, about affordability and reliability. I think, I think, but I'd like to, to find out somehow, but, but I think that's what people think about most. And I think about, I think they do think about the other things, but it's tied in with an increase in their bill. And I think if you ask them in the abstract about certain things, they might answer a certain way. But if you say, you know, if, if we move in this direction, it's going to mean your bill's going to go up by 10 or 20%, maybe they've got a different opinion about it.
Here, here's one thing I know for certain. Our community wants us to be a forward-thinking utility and give them affordability and reliability, you know, while we move into the future. They, they do not want us stuck in the past. And, you know, we've tried to be measured, you know? Political, you know, dynamics don't influence what, you know, what we're focused on as an organization. We're just trying to do the job our community expects out of us, no more, no less, you know? And, you know, and, and, and we can have it all if we do it right. And, you know, and, and again, even if the community told me, "I don't care about sustainability anymore, I just want you to run those coal plants into the ground," I still got to consider risk. It's risk that informs my decision-making as a CEO to ensure that, you know, I'm thinking about the future in a way that, that, that does not put my customers, you know, at risk of a big bill coming down the road, because we weren't being mindful of it. So, so risk above all else is how I get to the places the community wants me to go, having a good, measured view of, of, of risk and how to de-risk our operation in a way that gives us maximum control over what our future looks like. And that's what this process is all about.
And, Mr. Steen, I think you were alluding to a little bit this too, about everybody receiving the bill. We will be using the bill messaging as a tool to reach all of our customers, so whether they get it paper or digitally, that's one of the assets we'll be using as well.
Well, it's always a challenge to get people to respond to those things, but we do have, we do know who all our customers are.
Absolutely.
And we're in contact with them. And I, I wonder if, again, to make sure that it was fairly done, we'd need somebody to help us structure the questions. But I think we could find out a lot, and then, then if we're in these meetings and somebody says the community wants this, there'd be something to back it up.
We do use some of our partners.
I also think that one thing we're not talking about, and I'll conclude it, because I do think that we have several mechanisms. We have surveys, we have town hall meetings, we have the bills, we have online comments, we have focus groups. So, there is a way of mechanisms that we capture data, and then, like in, at least in my industry, you develop customer profiles, you get a good sense of what they need, what they don't like. But I will tell you, as a chairwoman, I've gone to many meetings in every zip code that you can think of and stakeholder meetings, so I could understand, so I could get a pulse. So, I would encourage all trustees, other than the mechanisms that I've outlined, one way to know is for a trustee to attend a District 5 meeting, or District 2 meeting, a 3 meeting, so that they could understand what their view is, just like it's my responsibility to attend a meeting in District 8, 9, and 10, and speak to my councilmen and women, and to get a good sense. That is our responsibility also. We can't just put all the responsibility on you. We can't just put all the responsibility on you. We're not an elected official, but we are a confirmed individual that is expected to have a pulse on the decisions that we made and that's through a formal and informal way of us getting, gathering data. And I would encourage all trustees to participate.
Some of those dates are on slide, I think it's 39, but we'll make sure you all have those in your calendar. Thank you.
All righty. I believe if I'm not, well, go ahead. Hey Kathy, nice to see you. Item number nine, which is public policy update, Ms. Kathy Garcia.
Hi, good afternoon. We have been at a 30,000-foot view for the conversation today and it's crucial that we be aligned with the longer-term vision that you as the Board of Trustees set for this utility. So today, I'm going to bring us back down to the ground and I'm going to talk about the things that are here before us, the here and now. And the here and now affects how you are thinking about this vision for 2050. What we're doing in the here and now impacts that. And then as you're thinking about that vision, it impacts how we execute in the here and now. So there's a, there's a true connection here. And down on the ground, it's very busy. So I'm going to talk today how ERCOT and the PUC are actively working on a range of policy initiatives designed to enhance grid reliability, integrate more renewable energy and improve market efficiency. The legislature continues to look at policies that strike this balance as well. They've also been discussing how our state's grid can better withstand extreme weather events and other disruptions. And locally, we continue working and partnering with our city owner and building and enhancing relationships with our stakeholders, making sure that our strategies and our approach to public policy remain relevant and effective. Our goal as leadership is to ensure that we not only adapt to this continuously evolving energy landscape that we've talked about today, but also to help actually lead in shaping it. So let's start by looking at the data and what it says about investment trends in ERCOT over the last 25 years. This chart seems very relevant for the conversations that we've just had. The slide shows how the grid is changing. We can see older, less efficient generators like coal and gas steam are declining. And while at the same time, more efficient gas combined cycle generators remain steady, however, they're not increasing. We know this and we can see it here on this slide, that the growth is in renewables, especially solar and storage. It's this unbalanced growth in renewables that is really the focus in the regulatory world. Regulators and grid operators want a better balance of dispatchable, or what we call on-demand generation, with renewables to maintain a reliable system. Some policymakers only want more dispatchable generation. And they're trying to find this right balance while the state's demand for energy is escalating rapidly. The demand is not shown here on this slide, but it is definitely growing. Demand on the power grid hit a record of 85 gigawatts last year and ERCOT is now saying demand could reach 150 gigawatts by 2030. So when we think about that, I know I've heard Elena say this before, it's nearly doubling the amount of energy that we have today within six years. So our next slide looks at some of ERCOT's initiatives seeking to address this. In ERCOT, the wholesale market is generally what drives investment decisions to build new sources of power generation. The Texas Legislature approved the creation of a new market tool called the Performance Credit Mechanism, or PCM, envisioning a program that provides financial incentives for power generators to be available during times of grid stress. While work continues on developing the PCM, regulators have just recently slowed on moving this forward with the desire to see if other market mechanisms can actually do what they're hoping can happen in the market. There are discussions occurring right now whether the PCM is still needed or not. So that is a current debate happening. ERCOT has also undergone an effort to holistically review and evaluate the structure of ancillary services. These are various programs used by ERCOT to maintain grid reliability and mitigate real-time operational issues. Ancillary services can be provided by generators or consumers and they can be used to increase or decrease the supply of electricity, often in a manner of minutes. Technology integration, that speaks to the engineering and operational challenges with having more renewable generation on the system. The sophisticated electronics that renewable generators use has led to the development of refined engineering standards and increased safeguards to ensure reliable and safe operations. As the renewable fleet grows, so will their requirements for reliability. And then there's the transmission planning requirements. The system planners at ERCOT, including transmission utilities such as CPS Energy, are working to keep up with the changes and ensure that the system can move all of the power from power suppliers to power consumers. Developing engineering practices that accommodate the demands of our evolving grid is a continual practice. And planners today are dealing with new customers, as we've heard, driven by data centers, AI facilities and Bitcoin miners, which require significantly more power in their operations. Our teams at CPS are actively engaged in working groups and in subcommittees at ERCOT that focus on these challenges. So that was ERCOT. Now let's take a look at PUC activities. The PUC's actions are also informed by the very same data that was shown at the beginning of this presentation. The PUC, at the direction of the legislature, has focused on resource adequacy. Will there be enough generation to meet the growing needs of the state? Just a couple of weeks ago, the PUC adopted a reliability standard that's intended to improve reliability of the grid by limiting the frequency, duration and magnitude of potential outages. When I'm talking outages here, I'm not talking about transmission or distribution. We're actually talking about there not being enough power to be on the grid, which puts ERCOT into perhaps emergency operations or rolling outages. Those are the outages that we're speaking to. The three criteria that I mentioned, frequency, duration and magnitude, all have specific targets that are in the rule that are to be met. Beginning in 2026, ERCOT must conduct an assessment every three years to determine whether the power system is actually meeting this reliability standard and to determine whether it can continue meeting the standard for the next three years. The PUC is going to use this new standard as the bar that must be met. And if the grid comes up short, then we can expect the PUC to consider larger market changes. The Texas Energy Fund is also a recently legislated and voter-approved funding mechanism to provide low-interest loans for new dispatchable generation projects. The PUC oversees the administration of this program and it's been a competitive application process. And the PUC just recently announced 17 gas-fired generation projects, those projects totaling almost 10 gigawatts, to receive 3% state-backed loans supporting their development. If all these projects advance through the due diligence review, which is the current stage of this program, the portfolio would represent a total of 5.4 billion in loans. We applied for the project. Our two projects were, however, not selected, but we intend to build those projects anyway, we have all along, and we're likely to get comparable funding for them. I mentioned the PCM earlier and while it has slowed, the reliability standard will be one of several policy parameters used in continuing to assess the PCM. So for awareness, there's a link between what's happening in the development of the PCM and also how it will be, how the reliability standard will factor into the PCM. There's a link there. And then after Hurricane Barrel, the PUC launched an investigation into CenterPoint Energy in the wake of its performance after the hurricane hit that region. The utility was criticized for several things. Their lack in preparation ahead of the storm, lack of tree trimming and maintenance, poor communication with customers and failure to give reliable information on outages. While policymakers continue to assess the actions that they want to take in reaction to this, the PUC has initiated a project to establish requirements for customer outage trackers. So that's something that's open and now will be discussed by stakeholders. While most of the focus has been on CenterPoint's response to the hurricane, the governor has also directed the PUC to investigate the Houston area as a whole, the outages that occurred there, as well as all the utilities that serve the area. The PUC issued extensive requests for information to numerous utilities and to customer groups impacted by the hurricane. The PUC is now reviewing those responses submitted and they're going to hold a public workshop in Houston on October 5th. The next step after that, the PUC will provide a report on its findings to the governor and to the legislature by December 1. So in addition to the PUC's work on Hurricane Barrel, legislative committees have also been focused on it, as well as other topics that they've been assigned by both the Lieutenant Governor and the Speaker, things that they're supposed to look at before the next session begins. This slide includes the committees having the most impact to CPS Energy. The Senate Business and Commerce Committee, which has jurisdiction over energy issues, is looking at a number of broad energy policies, such as the growth in energy, energy demand, talking about Bitcoin and AI, the role of new and emerging technologies in demand-side resources. The committee's also continuing their work on energy market design, the Texas Energy Fund and transmission topics. The Senate Special Committee, it's such a long name, I'll let it stay up there and just call it the Special Committee, was created by the Lieutenant Governor shortly after the hurricane hit Houston. They have met once and their focus has been on actions specific to CenterPoint Energy. It's not known at this time if they plan to have another hearing, but we do anticipate a report that will be forthcoming to the legislature. And then the House State Affairs Committee is primarily focusing their attention on the implementation of bills from last session, including relating, bills included, bills, including bills on the Texas Energy Fund, resiliency planning and distributed resources. The committee's also charged with overseeing the special wildfire committee that met earlier this year following the Panhandle wildfires. The committee has already issued its recommendations for wildfire prevention and mitigation, so we know those going into session already. Following Hurricane Barrel, the committee broadened their focus to all types of storm prep and response and the committee asked for input. So in August, we submitted a letter to the committee suggesting a couple of things. One, we proposed creating a statewide reserve of critical electric materials to assist with mutual aid efforts. This is actually something that I've heard our CEO talk about for a number of years. So we've put it again for consideration. We also suggested expanding the use of the statewide power outage alert system. And this was recreated after winter storm Yuri and we're suggesting that it can be used for more than just grid emergencies. The committee is currently reviewing all the input it's received to date. And the work of these committees, as well as all the other committees that CPS Energy is monitoring during this time, will culminate in legislative recommendations and individual committee reports being filed with the legislature later this year. There are a handful of regulatory entities and legislatively created bodies that have been tasked with certain types of work and reports. Oops. There we go. So these, these entities have been tasked with certain types of work and reports that are due before the end of the year. The PUC biennial report is issued every December, leading into a legislative session. It's going to include the commission's summary of their major rulemakings and recommendations for new legislation and requests where they have, where they're seeking legislative guidance on issues they've been addressing under their purview. The Railroad Commission is expected to put out a similar type of report. And the other three committees I've listed here are newly created committees that came from either last session or at the direction of the governor. I'd like to particularly highlight the Advanced Nuclear Working Group because our own principal of nuclear oversight, Brett Colby, was appointed to this group. The working group is studying the possible use of advanced nuclear reactors in Texas, including research and funding opportunities. The other two committees that are on the slide are legislative committees. The Texas Energy Fund Advisory Committee is scheduled to meet on October 8th. And this was established in response to a recent denial of a Texas Energy Fund application that had originally been elevated to the current due diligence phase. And while the final work from our legislative and regulatory bodies is forthcoming, we are already engaged internally and with our community and industry partners in formulating our public policy agenda for the 89th legislative session. While these legislative and regulatory activities are ongoing, we also continue executing on our Vision 2027 Plan and much of that includes various levels of engagement and coordination with our city owner. Some examples of these planned initiatives include tariff adjustments. So for instance, we will be bringing forward new and revised tariffs, some of them coming to the board, others also going to the board and city council for approval. An example of one going to both entities would be the green tariff. This tariff was created to enable customer access to large-scale renewables and we are currently coming forward with proposals, some enhancements to the tariff that will expand the program to be more of a strategic procurement of generation capacity for our customers. And then a couple of years ago, responding to feedback from the council and our community, we publicly announced a more forward-looking financial plan that set a transparent, set more transparent expectations on when we might seek additional rate support. At the time, we had laid out an evaluation process of roughly every couple of years. And to the extent that the planning sessions that you are having today, looking now to 2050, might impact that, just know that we are continuously assessing the situation with our board and with our city owner. And in addition to these policy items, we continue our efforts to improve communications and seek input on various matters. The mayor has reconstituted the Municipal Utilities Committee, we call it the MUC, which will meet monthly to hear about programs and policies from both CPS Energy and SaaS. And our Community Input Committee is fully appointed with the first meeting of the 19-member committee scheduled for October 9th. It's also important to know that our community engagement and these policy conversations that we've covered today will continue over a timeline that includes two major elections. First, in November, we have the 2024 general elections. And while a lot of focus is on the presidential race, it's important to note that San Antonio voters will also have the opportunity to vote on six charter amendments. San Antonio's city charter dictates how the government operates and the charter can only be amended every two years by public vote. And then in May, we have the 2025 municipal elections. It's expected to be a crowded field with at least four sitting council members running for mayor and there are additional candidates from the community seeking their first elected office. Elections will create turnover on the council and it will bring a new member, that being the mayor, to this board. So the initiatives I've spoken on today are providing us with a vital opportunity to address various challenge and to more openly, and to more importantly, shape the policies we'd like to see for our utility and our customers and our community. Policy proposals often come with well-intentioned goals. However, it remains a top priority that we evaluate proposals, not just for their potential benefits, but also for their financial impact on our customers. benefits, but also for their financial impact on our customers. We will continue to assess proposals with our customers at the forefront of our consideration. So we are engaged, and we will continue to position ourselves not just as participants in these discussions, but as leaders helping to drive it. We are slated to be back here before the board in the December-January timeline with an update on our public policy agenda as we head into the next legislative session. So with that, I will say thank you for the time today.
With the floor, Trinity Trustee, if they have any comments or questions for Kathy? Question, Dr. Moore.
Can you remind me, the CIC meetings, are those open to the public and/or to us?
The CIC, the full CIC meetings are open to the public and certainly open to you. They will be livestreamed and recorded as well.
Mr. Steen?
Just an opportunity to tell Kathy Garcia that was an outstanding presentation.
Thank you.
And thank you so much for the great job you do. Mr. Garcia, was this the job you once had? And I know she's doing a great job, and we're fortunate to have you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay. And if not, again, thank you, Kathy. Excellent presentation. It really, again, summarizes why strategic planning is very necessary. Many of these items were discussed, touched upon, and what's driving that business plan. So it just really puts a little, a nice little bow to the work that we have today, the work that we'll have tomorrow. On that note, if we can go ahead and move to item number 10, which is Review of Action Items. Ms. Shannon Ramirez.
Hi. Yes, ma'am. I had two open items that were open prior to this meeting. I had a request from Trustee Steen to include comments and minutes for Agenda Item 7 from the board meeting on July 29th. That will close when the July 29th board meetings are submitted for approval to this board. I think that will be at the September 30th meeting, so that will remain open until then. I also had Vice Chair Romero's request to include clarity and minutes on Agenda Item 7 of the July 29th meeting. That will also close when the minutes for the July 29th meeting are provided for approval by this board at the, I think at the September 30th meeting. And then I have for today, two additional items. I have a request from the Chair for the Agenda Items 5B to be moved to the September 30th board meeting agenda. I will put those on the general agenda, not on the consent agenda. And I have a request from Trustee Steen to include the basis of his concerns over past action items of the board in relation to Agenda Item 8 discussion in the minutes, and will do so. I have two items from executive session that, well, I will also follow up on.
I heard two, and I won't be, I mean, my colleagues have to confirm yes or no, but I heard two. I believe I heard that Mr. Steen stated that he never received the data, I believe, on the, spruce two.
On my list of Agenda Items, I have that we provided a June 17th board communication to all trustees, and that closed out the item, so I was going to follow up with you afterwards to see what you didn't get in that board communication and still need.
Well, and that's why I proceeded my comments by saying, please correct me if I'm wrong. So you may have sent it. You all sent us a lot of stuff, and I may have overlooked it. But what I, I think you understand what I, is it responsive to what I wanted?
Yeah.
I believe so, sir.
But if not, again, Mr. Steen, I just want to get, put it on the item. We do believe that that information was sent to everyone, and if it doesn't satisfy the inquiry, feel free to follow up. And then the other thing that I heard again is by Dr. Mackey is his needs were also not met with procurement, so we have from now until the next board meeting. So make sure that we, again, define what that means for Mr. Mackey, Dr. Mackey. So I don't know if those are items to add, or, but those are two things that I, at least I heard my colleagues wanting, needing support for their inquiries.
Yes, ma'am. I will add a follow-up with Trustee Steen on any open questions after the June 17th board communication. I'll resend it to you, so you have that communication at the top of the list, and I will follow up with Trustee Dr. Mackey on any open questions or objections that he had to the procurement items that he needs answered before the next board meeting.
All right. Thank you so much. And I think those are all the reviewed action items. Is there anything I missed? Okay. And then I guess officially, we're going to move to item number 11, which is meeting adjournment, and the time is 4:15. We need a motion sometimes, but is there a motion to adjourn?
No motion.
Second.